I had a friend that went to school with at Notre Dame and he came up there, you know, and Indiana isn't as hard as, you know, Michigan weather. And he was complaining about the snow and the cold and everything. And I told him, your tires are wrong on your car. You're going to be in big trouble this winter. But the argument, we had this very debate. And I said, if I go to Florida and it's really hot, there's only so many pieces of clothing I can take off before I get in trouble. And in Michigan, I can bundle up with as many coats and clothes that I want to keep warm. So I think if I had to choose, I don't like the extremes, but I would go with cold because you can at least stay warm.
Well, and then, then it goes to, would you rather freeze to death or burn to death?
Oh, man. Wow. I'll have to think about that one.
Because he's just going to fall asleep.
Pull the audience?
Yeah, you hear about hallucinations and all of that stuff. Yeah. Oh, speaking of morbid discussions, here comes Commissioner Colo. Just kidding, Commissioner Colo. You know Duffy Dottry, the old football coach of Michigan State, when a reporter asked him and they said, Coach Dodger, they said, hey, we hear you're late for practice. And he said, I'm never late for practice because it doesn't start till I get there.
I have an invocation tonight.
I know, we waited for you. All right, I'm going to call to order the August 11th, 2025 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Colo. I ask that you stand if you can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, let me apologize for being late. Tonight, you know, I was driving here and I was ready. I had a really nice invocation run. And it came to my attention that tonight, 11 years ago, was a great flood of 2014. It's a flood that has hit almost everyone in the community. It did not matter what quadrant you were in, it touched you and infected you. And it was devastating for so much of Royal Oak. It, you know, completely obliterated some homes that had friends that were, entire basements completely flooded out. And that was a common story across the city. And what made me think of it is how we came together after that, how we continued to go forward after the flood. Since then, we've dedicated ourselves to being climate resilient. We have continued to and have started making green infrastructure improvements. So all the bioswales you see around town, the new trees, over eight hundred trees a year, that's happened as a result of that flood. So while that flood was devastating, it led to really good change at this commission. So when you have good people thinking about ways to solve issues, get great results. Hope we see that tonight. Thank you.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of a rich and sound, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form. That brings us to a couple of presentations we have tonight. We have Dr. Pernick in attendance for the presentation of the 2024 Voting Challenge Award.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the fourth election, the last election where we had a voter challenge. The idea is among all the eight communities in our next door community to have a challenge to encourage voter turnout in the general election. And so we have winners and then anybody who got 75% voter turnout was also considered a winner. It's my challenge, so I can make up the rules. So Royal Oak had 75.29%, and so then we asked the winners to designate a charity and we donate money. So the city designated the Royal Oak Animal Shelter, so I have a check for $250 to give to somebody and give to you. And then take a picture and we'll put it in next door. So my father-
Is your member of the Royal Oak Animal Shelter to run me down here too?
So.
Dr. Pernick, thank you for the challenge. As a citizen and someone who loves democracy, we appreciate it. Thank you. Now we have a presentation by the city manager, ten from the top. Mr. Gachow. And by the way, I just have to tell you, we all appreciate your presentation style to go down there so we don't have to do the side look the entire presentation. This is very helpful.
Well, our third try at this, and I think we're finally getting a rhythm. So let's see, I think the screen is up, the clock has started, and I got 10 minutes. So thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, and the viewing public. This is my ten from the top where I probably attempt to give 10 brief updates on going. It says green, isn't it? Can y'all hear me? On the mic?
How about now?
Well. I'll get my choral projection voice.
Yes.
Yes, so these are great happenings and goings on from staff of public interest and also just an opportunity for me to elevate the good work that staff is doing. So number one, through the ribbon cutting, I want to continue to give progress on the senior center updates. Our facilities team is doing an excellent job keeping tabs up on the progress. And this is the first time we have some actual positive construction pictures to show. So far, we've just been showing demolition. So here you can see in the top picture, we have some flooring that's been installed throughout the corridors and many rooms. In the restrooms, you see some major tiling improvements and plumbing improvements that have been installed. You also see lighting improvements that have been installed throughout the building. The project is remaining on schedule and we've started to pass our initial inspections. Outside the building, you'll see landscape maintenance and lot cleanup going on, and they're continuing to work to prepare for a generator install to make the building more resilient. So really good job for the team and they are still looking at, I believe, a reopening in a few weeks. So well done, facilities and DPS. Really happy to announce an ADA parking expansion in our 11 mile deck just around the corner. Really credit to, again, the facilities team and our parking manager who have been working together to prioritize this. This has been a request that has been asked of us by some members of the community, but also Henry Ford, our partners at Henry Ford. And so you'll see, we've doubled the amount of ADA parking spaces on Level One and Level Two. This is the parking garage right adjacent to Henry Ford. You can see the fresh paint has just been installed, so if you do go down there, you'll see those, those new spaces with Level Two, which I believe, I believe has some connection to Henry Ford, I think that's the level, has the most amount of spaces added to it. So credit again to the team, DPS, facilities, and our parking manager. Excellent initiative. While we're at it, parking updates. This is Lafayette Garage. This is a historic image we've had. This is a stairwell that has been divested in over the past several years. The facilities team is taking initiative and they have brought on Fishbeck, an engineering team who's actually improving our stairwells in our downtown garages, most notably the Center Street and the Lafayette Garage. So that, that standard's frankly unacceptable to the team and they're doing a great job of just not walking past a problem and taking ownership and correcting the problem. So great credit to them. Other, other actions they're taking, they have the Center Street Elevator that is, was in need of repairs, which is funded by a state of Michigan grant that we received in 2024 to do so, is still waiting on Kone, the elevator company. But ultimately, they're, they're booking the project and I'm understanding that it's six weeks out. So that should address that elevator issue at Center. Also, you'll notice LED lighting upgrades at the Lafayette Deck that should be up and running by September 4th. Power washing scheduled in all the garages. So what I'm seeing here is a really good proactive preventative maintenance approach to our parking facilities. And it's, again, hands off to DPS and the facilities team for tackling that. They're doing a great job. Library solar roof update. We don't have solar out there, but we are soon going to have solar out there in the bid world. So I'm really thrilled and credit to our, our team. We have a new sustainability systems manager, Devin, on board. He's really helping us get this across the finish line. She's getting the bid together. You see a full slate of solar array, as you can see in the image, that's depicted to be installed on the library rooftop. We've estimated the initial return on investment of eight and a half years in terms of energy offsets. That's 52% energy offsets from the solar panels, based on the current trending analysis of the energy usage for the facility. An annual 35-year estimated savings impact of $2.5 million in utility costs that we won't expend due to this investment. So it's been a heck of a project. The library had found success in getting a 70, I think a $70,000 technical assistance grant to help offset some of the costs. And the commission also prioritized this with the library board and has invested the American Rescue Plan Act funding to make sure this project comes to fruition. So I'm really looking forward to seeing this construction happen. Hopefully, we can still hit the fall construction schedule. IT Department, they do a lot of work behind the scenes, but man, have they been doing a lot of work towards pushing modernization efforts. That's been a big priority of ours since the beginning of the year. Some initial things you might not see, but we see, and it's really my opportunity to elevate that. This department's going to be fully staffed for the first time in 10 years, and that is a huge accomplishment for the director. So shout out to Chris and his team. They've been reorganizing the department around specializations, trying to really make sure that we are addressing all industry specializations. And you'll see that with an emphasis in cybersecurity investment, making sure that Royal Oak is leading in local government in terms of security and our protocols and just how we, how we proactively approach things. And also policy modernization. We also want to be on the forefront. We recognize that AI responsible use policies, you know, are a little bit lagging in the government side. We want to lead on that, so we are working, adopting those standards so we can be at the head of the pack on responsible use of AI. Also looking at incident and disaster recovery response. That's another big priority for the director. So I applaud this team. They've all been really pushing for professional development and training and they've been doing amazing work behind the scenes. And so nice job, IT. Hats off. Woodward Dream Cruze this weekend, can include a 10 from the top when that's coming up this, this weekend. So if you've been here for a minute, you'll see the classic cruisers. If you haven't seen them already, they'll start trickling in and they'll certainly be here by Thursday with classic cars. For our part, we have the, the Performance Park at Woodward Car Show that's going to be located at Memorial Park, August 15th, 12 to 9, and August 16th, 10 to 7. Over 500 vehicles estimated with 20 retail vendors and 10 food vendors, so that lots, lots goes on behind the scene to make sure that happens. So again, I'll shout out our DPS, our Parks and Rec team and our public safety team for all the work they put in behind the scenes and out in front this weekend when you'll see our public safety team out there in full force making sure it's safe. Shout out to the farmer's market. I attended this market. I saw some of our local officials and it was a heck of a turnout. It was packed out there. And so I just really wanted to take a minute to, to credit them for the work that they did. We had over 100 vendors celebrating each year of the market. It was a great event with great entertainment, some fantastic music. And they are going to be doing one more 100 year celebration October 8th for their Harvest Festival. So if you can, do join. It was a pretty amazing summer festival and I expect no less for October. Parks investment, this is on tonight's agenda, but this is a, this is a major structure that's going to be involved hopefully this fall. That's the goal for the team is to still hit that fall installation schedule. They've gone through a heck of a due diligence period with the Parks and Rec Board, and we have a recommendation for the city commission to consider. Lots of, lots of good options, but ultimately it came down to two options. We had a $260,000 budget. The options are below. It is a pretty sizable play area. This is a really heck of an investment. And a play area that big means you need accessibility. You need to have good existing sidewalks that can help us access that area and good on-street parking to help us minimize any impact on adjacent areas. So obviously with that, also the neighborhood demographics need kids to use a parking or the place, the playscape. So we'll talk about that tonight, but I just wanted to take a minute to shout out the more, the more investment in the parks, which is something that we've been doing a while. And so credit to the commission for prioritizing this in the budget. I'm hoping that we can get this in the ground hopefully this fall. And finally, happy to introduce Meg Truba. I feel like we've been introducing staff the past couple of meetings, but Meg is our new Director of Economic Development. She comes to us from immediately the Village of Franklin as their former village manager. She is also going, she was also prior to that, the Assistant City Manager in Troy in charge of economic development. So she's worked with the trades and the building department code and the economic development team in Troy for, for a few years prior to her service with Franklin. Meg will be starting this week. She will not be available today, but I am eager to get her introduced to the community. And we're, she's very excited to start. So welcome, Meg, and she'll be, she'll be coming on soon. And thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I can take any questions or if you're good.
Questions? Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Gachow. That was a great presentation. Love seeing all the improvements we have going on. Just one thing that stuck out to me, we talked about the stairwells, especially on Lafayette Garage. I'd not seen that nice little garden growing, but I'm excited to see it go away now.
Yeah.
While we have a team in town, it might be wise to have them look at the library stairwell also down on the west side. It's an emergency exit that leads up from the bottom floor and might, could maybe just be beneficial to have them take a look and see if there's an assessment on that.
Absolutely. As the director, I'll mention that to the director.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right. You did that in 10 minutes.
Hopefully I did.
I think.
Thanks.
Not sure when I kept counting the time, but you did really good, Joe. Thank you. All right. That brings us to item number five, which is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda? We have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion on the motion to approve tonight's agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We've established an agenda. All right, this brings us to public comment. Please keep in mind, the city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for both the public to address the city commission on any city-related issues, whether or not they're on the agenda. I ask that comments be directed to the commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. The city has made it easier for you to request follow-up on any issue. Simply scan the QR code you see displayed. We're signing with staff in the lobby at the meeting tonight before speaking at public comment. If you have questions, whatever you need, it's helpful for us to get back to you with the answers. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, you'll state your name and address. Please be mindful, the city commission wants to hear from everyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And we have a convenient timer at the podium to help you keep track of your allotted time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. You're free to reach out to us with the QR code, email us, however you feel is the most appropriate way to get your message across to us. Please note that city commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address those questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to the proper city department if the matter isn't scheduled for tonight. Staff are also taking notes and will look into matters as needed. Any public comments the city commission or manager respond to post-meeting will utilize the contact information on the public comment sign-in, so please make sure to double-check your information for accuracy. All right, with that, who's first tonight? Ms. Wagman.
Good evening, Janice Wagman. Is this on? Is it on?
Uh.
It says green, is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. This is basically going to be a repeat of what I said a month ago. I'm concerned about the city's progress in spending our $28 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds. As you know, we must not just commit or encumber the money, we have to actually spend it and have the checks written by the end of next year. That is a hard deadline set by the U.S. Treasury and any unspent funds will have to be returned. I'm also concerned that some of the projects allocated under ARPA, such as the farmer's market public restroom and the animal shelter, the 200,000 that's dedicated, have already incurred costs for architectural and other services, but are no longer moving forward as originally planned. Because ARPA has strict rules, according to what I've discovered, on procurement and allowable expenses, I'm worried that if these contracts were not competitively bid, which architectural were not, the expenditures may not qualify under the guidance of the Treasury. On a related note, the animal shelter also has a $1.1 million allocated from a different funding source, also with a December 31st, 2026 deadline. Originally, it was supposed to be half of a building and an architect was hired, again, without going to bid. Then it was discovered the project would be too expensive and would not meet the needs. At a budget meeting, alternatives were discussed, such as funding another building, partnering with Oakland County, or working with a rescue organization. Meanwhile, the current facility either needs a complete rehab or a new solution altogether. This isn't fair to the animals. And in the interest of transparency, the public deserves to know the status and the plan going forward. I urge the commission to review these allocations now, ensure all contracts meet procurement rules, finalize the project list, and accelerate progress so that both our residents and our animals benefit from these investments without risking clawbacks or disallowed costs. And finally, instead of a spreadsheet in the consent agenda, I would appreciate your adding them to the next agenda for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagman. Anybody else wish to speak at public comment tonight? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close public comment and bring the meeting back to this side of the table. Before us, we have a consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off tonight's consent agenda? Commissioner Colo.
H and F, please.
H and F. So F and H alphabetically. Anybody else? Does anyone want to make a motion for the consent agenda, less F and H? We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion on this motion. None, I'll call for the vote. All who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item F, Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this item is to set a public hearing to vacate a public alley. And I just, I noticed in the write-up that there aren't any community benefits associated that's being proposed. We did pass, you know, I talked earlier to the invocation about when we do things as a community, right? And we, as, you know, city commissioner here came together, did put together a community benefits package, and that included what we want to see when we use public lands for new development. So this would enable a owner to combine two parcels into one and then potentially use that, those old public lands for their gain. So I would just like to see before we set a public hearing, go through a public notice to see developer or the owner that's come back with what public good will come out of that. So I would just like to get the tables read on that and, yeah, appreciate from that.
Ms. Donahue, a little bit of background?
Sure. So we did have a request to vacate a portion of a public alley. So this is the southwest corner of 11 Mile and Campbell Road where there's a gas station there. Same property owner also owns this parcel to the south, which is just a parking lot with a public alley in between. So the idea is, is as Commissioner Colo mentioned, to combine those into one parcel. The owner, who I believe is here tonight, does not have a specific development plan in mind. He did mention EV chargers as a possibility, that this would give him more space to do that in the future, but nothing set in stone just yet.
Maybe a question, Ms. Donahue. Does the engineering department have any need or see any potential need for this alley moving forward?
We do not. We don't have any utilities under there. DTE does have a pole and some guy wires, so we retain easements here. We spoke with all of our departments, police, fire, DPS, and planning. DPS was the only one that said, you know, if they ever put a guardrail there, it might make our life a little bit harder to plow the rest of the alley that's still public, but not something that they would have an issue working around, so.
Okay. But we wouldn't take it now if we vacate this, we wouldn't have to plow it anymore. So there would be some minor-
Well, we'd still have a public alley to the west, so from Wilson to the middle.
Right, we'd still have to plow that, but we wouldn't have to plow this section.
Correct.
Which is de minimis, but nonetheless, it's a little benefit. Okay. Anybody else? Questions? Commissioner Macy?
So when this request, kind of request comes through, is it typical or required that you ask for the community benefits as part of the request? I'm just wondering, so, you know, Commissioner Colo is saying like we shouldn't be doing this because we haven't heard about that. Do we normally hear about that?
That has not been standard procedure in the past, no.
Okay, so Commissioner Colo was just talking about because we have this community benefits plan, we should be, I guess, telling our engineering maybe in advance that we want them to be asking for this before they bring this to us? That wasn't for you, that was a rhetorical question.
Commissioner Colo.
Yeah, just to your point, Commissioner Macy, I agree with you. I don't recall, we haven't vacated land like this since we've enacted the benefits package. So I think this might be one of the first ones since we enacted it.
Commissioner Douglas?
Oh, no, we've had multiple vacations over the past, I don't know, X years. There's one also on Forest Street behind the daycare center. There's another one on Woodward behind another daycare center as I, as I think about it. So it's not, it's not uncommon.
Okay.
And I would say this, I mean, I, and I, as sitting on the planning commission, see a lot of discussion about wanting developers to bring us benefits, but it just feels to me like the vacation of an alley is perhaps not of a scope to, to look too hard at, you know, what benefits we might reap from that.
Anybody else? Ms. Cola?
Yeah, no, I just, I still, I see this as, it's clearly we're combining parcels here. This is for a developer's benefit using public property. And other ones you mentioned, like, you're right, the daycare that was, you know, daycare in a community, I think is good. I just, I would, if we're going to do this, I would want to see a plan on how they're going to use the property. Right now, we're just giving it to them for potential use. There's not a use on the table. So I guess any other properties we have vacated, we've done so under the guise of it has a use coming up. This is just to preserve the potential use for them in the future. And I would rather see what the site's going to be before we vacate it. So I would just put that out there before even get to a public hearing.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I mean, that's my next question. It's not like we're deciding on the vacation today. We're deciding on whether or not there'll be a hearing so people can tell us what they think about.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm, I understand what you're looking for a little bit, but I'm sort of unsure what they were supposed to have done anywhere along the way, and it feels like moving forward here isn't causing any harm.
Commissioner Herzog?
So what is the next steps? We're, this is just to approve the hearing, and then what happens after the hearing?
So we're required to hold a hearing four weeks or longer after we set the date tonight. We will have a public hearing normally. If there were like a bunch of properties involved, we would let everybody know to come and speak on this. In this case, it's the one owner, that one's both. But we'll put a notice in the paper as well, so people know what's going on. And that, at that time, we'll kind of present every, all the facts again, although we're kind of giving you everything tonight anyways. And just ask, does anyone have any comments on this? And then you make the decision, vacate or don't vacate. Or you could also decide tonight, we don't want to entertain it and, and don't even have a public hearing. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Colo?
You know, I'll also say, I think it was a year ago, we were talking about resolutions one through five on a street, and I was on the opposite end of this argument where I said, hey, let's take it to a public hearing. And then I vote no at the public hearing. So I think Commissioner Macy and I talked about that about a year ago. So I'm, I, I will be voting no if this is presented tonight, but I'm also okay if it goes to a public hearing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think for me, the way I look at it, there's a process for this. Petitioner asks for a hearing to say, here's my plan, here's why I need it. I don't, I'm not opposed to being heard, especially when we have no demonstrative ability to prove that we need this alley. There's nothing we need from it as a city. It's not like, sometimes we don't move forward with hearings because there's like zero chance we're going to do something. I'm open to this. I want to hear what the petitioner has to say, therefore, let's schedule a hearing. In some cases, you're right, Commissioner Colo, we have had instances where I'm like, we're wasting everybody's time, like this is going to be a no. But in this case, I, it's up in the air, so let's ask the question and schedule the hearing. Find out what the petitioner is looking for. That'd be my recommendation. And if the petitioner just says, I like it a lot, okay, well then we can vote no. If they say, look, here's my plan for the property, future plan, I need to secure it now for these reasons, because I can't get financing to do the project I want to do, whatever it may be, okay, let's, let's hear that. because I can't get financing to do the project I want to do, whatever it may be, okay, let's, let's hear that case. Commissioner Macy?
I'll move approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes, six one. Okay, Commissioner Colo, item H.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is the presentation of the Human Rights Commission Annual Report. I see our amazing chair in the audience and thought we can give her the opportunity to talk about the work they've done over the last year.
Ms. Andrews, come on up.
Dr. Andrews.
Dr. Andrews, that's right.
Dr. Andrews.
I forgive me.
For that degree. Good evening, Mayor Fournier and commissioners. My name is Rachel Andrews, and I'm pleased to be here this evening to speak on behalf of the Human Rights Commission as we present our annual report. Since last standing before you, the HRC prepared and launched a community survey to better understand the needs and concerns of the community at large. This was a very complex and arduous process. As we determined early on that we didn't want to limit the survey to residents of Royal Oak, but also include business owners, workers, and visitors. We felt this was necessary as Royal Oak is a destination city, and the experiences of visitors, business owners, and workers is indicative of how our city is perceived throughout the metro area. We are deeply appreciative of every person who filled out the survey, and we are very proud that we were successfully able to reach members of the community at large. We are excited by the results, and we look forward to releasing them to the public in the near future. This survey gives us important information with which to map out not just the coming year, but also long-term goals for the HRC. Our next steps include creating partnerships with city and community groups to work together on projects inspired by what we've learned, and to take advantage of the wealth of experience and knowledge these groups have while sharing ours. We will also hold small group meetings throughout the community to communicate what we've learned from the survey and how we will use it to shape our work. In addition to this massive undertaking, we were also present at Family Pride and Juneteenth events in Royal Oak again. We felt there was more interest and energy about the work we're doing. We collected contact information for about fifty people who wanted to hear more and participate in our activities. In January, we were joined by two member, new members of our commission, Amar Khan served from January until this month, and Dia Oberay, a high school sophomore at Roper School, she's amazing, has been the youth member. We are very grateful for their contributions. We would like to thank Deputy City Manager Susan Barkman, Elena Brash, Management Fellow, for their support and guidance this year. Additional thanks to Ashley Morel, a former member of the HRC, who offered significant insight and expertise during the initial stages of creating the survey. Sincere appreciation also goes to the Communications Director, Kara Sokol, for her help now and in the coming months as we prepare materials related to presenting the survey results to the community. And thank you to all of you, as always, for your continued support of the work of the Human Rights Commission. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Andrews, and thank you to the board, and thank you for your leadership on the board. You guys have taken this literally from nothing to something. I mean, we passed an ordinance, we said, okay, let's appoint some members, and it's like, okay, what's going to happen? And you guys have done nothing but, you know, amaze us. So we're so grateful for the work that you do, the important work, and not just for our city, but setting an example for the region.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions? Commissioner Hunt?
Well, first, congratulations, Dr. Andrews.
Thank you.
Um, and thank you for all of your work, all of your team's work in, like the mayor said, building this, um, organization or this committee from the ground up and making it useful for our community. And I understand with the survey that you did, it was a huge undertaking, and, but that the results are going to be beneficial for our community, so thank you for that. You mentioned that you were looking to do some programs, um, moving forward. Are those going to be like educational-type programs, or is it more community, um, bringing the community together? What types of programming are you looking to do?
I think with the partnerships, we're thinking programming.
Okay.
Um, but with the, the small group meetings, that's going to be more invert, informational.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly, that the results of the survey are going to be a part of that educational process?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
You too. Okay. Oh, I believe we do. Let me look here. I think we have to receive and accept the report.
I would still move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second by Commissioner Hunt? Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, very good. All right, next up is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission licensed establishment Royal Oak Good Times Food and Drink, Inc., doing business as Bella Lamone, request to amend plan of operation, Chief Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The Police Department received a request from Royal Oak Good Times Food and Drink at one hundred South Main Street to amend their current plan of operation. And specifically, what they're looking for is to change their format, hours, floor plan, and their doing business as name. They're proposing that the entire business will operate as Bella Lamone, a traditional Italian restaurant. The first floor will be used for banquets and private events and will be operated on customer bookings. And the second floor will operate from four PM to ten PM, Tuesday through Thursday, four PM to eleven PM on Fridays, eleven AM to eleven PM on Saturdays, and eleven AM to nine PM on Sundays. The applicant is requesting to increase the first floor total seating from one hundred sixteen to two hundred six patrons, and the increase is based on using the space for table and chairs for dining customers versus standing customers that they had before this. And the second floor will remain unchanged with this proposal. They're requesting to maintain their existing dance permits, both on the first and second floors of the establishment, and they're also requesting to maintain their entertainment permit for occasional acoustic music and occasional DJs. And the applicant has pledged to continue to keep their windows and doors closed to the outside when there is live music or a DJ playing at the location. After reviewing this, the Police Department is not opposed to this request. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have this evening, and I will point out that the owner, Adam Merkel, is here, as well as his attorney, Kelly Allen, who I'm sure will speak to any questions specific to them as well.
All right, any questions for Chief Moore? Okay, Ms. Allen, Mr. Merkel, petitioner want to make any, uh, statements, comments, field questions?
Good evening. This is Adam Merkel, if you don't know him. Um, this is Bella Lamone, and the best way to know what it's about is to Google, uh, cello, Italian restaurant in Howell. He's got, um, virtually the same, it'll be the same menu and the same kind of style, a traditional, um, Italian restaurant. So this is the third iteration of Good Times, actually the fourth.
Yeah, we've got a few runs in.
Well, but Brian Kramer before, before Adam. And, um, so Adam has decided for a whole host of reasons that he needs to double down with a restaurant and banquet-style facility at, at this corner, and that he is going to devote most of his time there. He's got his, his two Howell restaurants humming. And, um, he's got, he's going to have great staff and chef. And I think that you can see from the demonstrated hours in the plan of operation that the latest he's going to be open is eleven PM. So, um, shouldn't be too much, any, there shouldn't be any issues after, after hours or late in the night, in the downtown. The upstairs is pretty much the same with regard to the outdoor service areas. That used to be Pinky's up there. And part of it is enclosed, part of it isn't enclosed, again, no music out there. And he's got the, um, the patio on Main Street in the right of way that he is keeping. Uh, the numbers are going up on the first floor because if you look in the plan of operation that we submitted, the proposed floor plan and the old floor plan are quite different. There was a big, open space in that first floor to enable dancing, and they had one more dance floor. Now, that's all going to be tables and chairs. Um, they will have the dance floor, one up, one down, um, and, in accordance with the MLCC rules, which has to be ten by ten. So, I mean, I think that this is a good plan, not just for Adam, but for the city. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a site in your city that you want to be vibrant, and you want to have no trouble, and you want to have, um, people coming to the city to go to this destination. And he'll probably, you know, people that are familiar with this place in Howland, a little bit west, um, can testify. In fact, I meant to pull up his Google reviews. I understand they're very good. Um, so that's all I have. If you have any questions of me or Adam?
Questions? Commissioner Hunt?
Thank you. I noticed in the police memo, Police Department's memorandum that there were thirty, thirty-four calls for service from the Police Department, six of those being alcohol-related with the previous establishment. What sorts of, um, trainings do you have for your staff to make sure that they're abiding by the liquor license trainings and, um, understandings to kind of mitigate those calls?
Yeah, I think the biggest, uh, reason is the concept. Obviously, when you have a late-night spot, which we tried for a period of time, I was absentee for the last couple of years dealing with some family issues that needed, you know, a lot of my full attention. So I hired someone in to run the operation. Obviously, it did not go as planned, and it's not part of what we do. So I'm back fully running these restaurants, like I have the three restaurants in Howell and Park Big Rock in Birmingham, things like that. So, um, I don't, I don't anticipate any issues. It's just a family restaurant. What happened previously was, you know, I think due to the, the crowds that, for whatever reason, that was coming in, the hours, and it just wasn't something that we were, wanted to be a part of. So as soon as we realized there was some trouble, or as soon as I did, I shut it down, so, and decided to reconcept. And I think this will be a really great addition for the city.
Commissioner, I might add to that, um, you know, he's been there since two thousand and eighteen, and, you know, obviously closed during COVID, but that's, no police calls are a good number. Um, but that, that number is not really that high, at least in my experience. But things have gotten so much tighter here in the city. And the staff that he has now, the employees that he has now are all tips-trained, tips or Tams trained, so you do tips and...
Yeah, and it's, it's an entirely new staff, too.
Right.
So we're, we're obviously not going to tolerate any of that, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Maybe it's personal, I don't know, but menu looks amazing. I think this is a similar menu you had back in two thousand and eighteen where you're doing some concepts up top.
Yeah, we did a little pop-up up there for a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, people love that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great. The downstairs is going to be reservable for, like, I don't say banquets or, or parties, but like groups. So if you have a workout, and you have a-
Yeah, corporate events, private parties, yes.
Corporate event, where you had a big family, wedding, shower, whatever. Uh, but the upstairs will be essentially served as a restaurant, same menu, but it's going to be, you know, patrons can go there between-
Yeah, six days a week upstairs for the most part, and then, uh, downstairs, you know, for now, we're planning on doing banquets, private events, but I have some other ideas for, for down there as well to bring some action there, so.
Okay.
Um, but the, the whole building will be Italian, uh, put it that way. But I think, um, you know, I'm very familiar with the restaurants in the area, and I think, you know, we've had cello for eight and a half years. We have a four and a half star rating. And so in a sense, we're just doing what we've done before, and I think, uh, it's, it's a great hole to fill that, uh, hopefully, you know, everybody will like here.
Proven recipe, bringing it over to Royal Oak.
Yeah, it works, yeah. We've tried everything there, so this is a third time, third time's the charm. Yeah, you don't really have a choice, you know, with those kind of mortgage payments, but, uh, you know, we'll, I think we'll make this one work, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Merkel or Ms. Allen? Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, thank you for being here tonight. The, the menu at cello looks great.
Thank you.
Excited to see another good Italian spot in town. Mentioned other ideas for the downstairs. I'm assuming just by the plan of operation, it's, you can't go past, I think it's eleven o'clock most nights, so there's not a nightclub concept that's going to come out.
No, no, we're, we're, I'm not a late-night type of, you know, that was just something that we tried, and I hired someone to try it out and see if it'll work, but that's not my forte. I'm a restaurant guy, and moving forward, we'll do just, you know, family restaurants. So there will be no late-night action there, other than, you know, if we have a private event or something and somebody wants to, you know, um, have their work party or something like that, but there won't be any riffraff at all.
This is not before you this evening, um, because Chief was already, they're so fast over there at that Police Department, the, the report was already done, um, when Adam came to us, but he's, he's thinking about doing a Little Lamone, is that what you call it?
Yeah, so the idea is upstairs we'll do Bella Lamone, handmade pastas and lemon cello and all those things. And then we do, uh, downstairs, my plan is in the Pearl's space, which was before, to do Little Bella's Pizza and Wine Bar. So we'll have a kind of another cool thing there. And then next door, where the Bohemia side of those will be basically our event space. And I think that gives us two dynamic Italian restaurants plus, you know, um, the space. So I think that'll be the best use of the building.
Yeah, good, good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hunt?
You mentioned that the pasta's handmade in the restaurant?
Yes.
Is the gluten-free pasta handmade also?
It's not, but, uh, it's, it's a tough, that's a tough one, executive volume, but, uh, if we can figure it out, I assure you, we'll, we'll do it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. The gluten-free pizza, uh, at the next one will be, though, so we'll, we'll make that now.
What's the target open date?
Uh, so we, you know, we've kind of been working on the interior since we've closed, as far as just, it's pretty much just a decor job. It's a lot of pain, a lot of difference. You know, everything that was there before, Pinky's kind of worked functionally, so it's just really, you know, morphing it into a, into an Italian restaurant. So, uh, we are hoping to open next week.
Wow.
Yeah.
All right, good for you.
Yeah, I move fast when I'm all in, so. And then downstairs, you know, if we can figure that out, um, you know, and get, you know, get the approvals we need and that kind of thing, that will probably be October for the pizza and wine bar, uh, part portion, so. Yeah.
Already fast food.
So we'll be able to do Italian and banquets and everything, you know, right away, so.
Great.
Yeah. Guys are all welcome to come.
You know, Mr. Merkel, I'm trying to take off about ten or fifteen pounds. I don't think this is a-
That's not going to help you.
This is not compliant.
A lot of our dishes are lighter, though. We don't really use a lot of butter, cream. You know, we, we, um, we use a lot of olive oil and, and things like that, so, uh, you shouldn't be feeling too heavy when you leave.
I'll pretend it's all in the Mediterranean diet and I'll-
Yeah, exactly, right.
There we go. All right, anybody else?
I'm, I'm looking forward to be back.
Yeah, we're, we're, I know, uh, you know, you had some things you had to take care of, and we're glad that you're back.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, we loved cello when it was there. I've never been to the one in Howell. But yeah, one of the nice things was half portions of pasta, so to, to help the mayor out just a little bit there.
Thank you. I'll just run around, you know, do a couple of miles and then eat some pasta. It'll be good.
Yeah, yeah. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, all right. I think my doctor sometimes watches these meetings, so I'll make sure she understands that I'm, uh, you know, taking responsibility for my health. All right, um, okay, if you guys want to have a seat, uh, we'll discuss it up here and see what happens. All right. We have, this is not a public hearing because it's just a change, uh, to amend a plan of operation. Who had their hand up first? Commissioner Cheesem?
I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cheesem, a second by Commissioner Herzog. All right. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimously approved. All right. Well, good luck. Can't wait.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm sure definitely we're impressed by the menu, but we're even more impressed by your timeline, so that's, that's pretty outstanding.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to item nine, approval of Kensington Play Structure Installation Proposal at Red Run Park. Ms. McGeethren?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we're bringing forward the proposal to install the Kensington Playground Structure at Red Run Park, a recommendation that received unanimous approval from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board at their August seventh meeting. This project reflects months of planning across three potential sites, with Red Run emerging as the most cost-effective and accessible location.
Sorry. It offers the only feasible space for dedicated on-street accessible parking directly adjacent to the playground, and initial, and, and installation costs are nearly twenty-seven thousand dollars lower than the alternative second runner-up at VFW Park. We've also received some feedback regarding benches included in the design. I'm pleased to share that the vendor can swap out the current backless benches for benches that do have backs. There is a slight price increase for that, if that's the direction the commission wishes to go, and I- and I can provide those details tonight if the commission would like to consider that option. With commission approval at tonight's meeting, we'll be on track for a fall installation of the play structure, bringing a modern inclusive play space to one of our most active community parks. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions? Commissioner Cheesem?
Thank you, and I appreciate that you were prepared to address the feedback that I know I sent you, I think other commissioners might have sent, about the benches. I really appreciate your responsiveness on that. I think that there were some concerns that there, it's great to see a number of benches around the park because I think that is a step that we've been trying to go in, in that direction for issues around accessibility to different members of the community, but the backs did seem to be important. I was thinking about lots of different scenarios where, you know, it's a playground, a mom nursing a baby, watching her other kid, like, she needs a back, or somebody with, you know, limited mobility would need the back to the seats. So, I real, I, I would like to, can I do it now?
Sure.
To amend the, oh no, to-
Well, you could just make a motion.
Sorry, sorry, Robert's Rules, sorry. Make a motion for approval, but with the modification of having backs, I don't know, is it a-
Yeah, I think that's an understood motion.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Alright, discussion. I think one discussion point for the public, we all know what the costs are because we saw the correspondence come through on the cost, but maybe Ms. McGeethren, you can help us for the public to understand the delta.
Sure, of course. So, the original benches that we proposed, we asked for seven benches to be brought on with the installation. They were $547 each without backs. With backs, each bench is $1,061. So, the original total for the project was $201,491.53, and the new total with the backs on the benches would be $205,446.65.
Yeah.
I think I'm screwing up the Robert's Rules left and right, but if I could ask another question, because the, the playground area, so not just the actual playscape, but the area is very rectangular, and going back to benches, like, the one corner, it might be the northwest corner, it's like the, let's see. Or the top picture, you have a corner where you have some benches that are sort of perpendicular to each other. And so, this is a small thing, but I wonder why the spacing, whereas if you brought them closer together, it would be easier for people to talk to each other on the, at those benches. And I'm just thinking, as we're building things in our community, where we can build them with an eye for creating situations where people can talk to each other and engage with each other, I think that there's a lot of advantages to that. And I'm wondering if this might be a place where even just moving those benches a little bit closer to each other on that corner could create a situation where people can just talk to each other a little bit easier. It's a small change, but could have some impact, so I'm wondering about that.
Yes, we can ask the vendor to adjust those two benches on the northwest corner to be a little closer together for, you know, creating more community in that spot, absolutely.
Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, great suggestion, I think that's, that's a good eye for something that, as you say, is a small change, but can make a difference. So, I'm excited for this playground to come, to come to finally in the ground in Royal Oak instead of just in storage, I'm sure you can use that room for something else over there. I would have preferred VFW, so Red Run is my soccer park, we're there all the time, and VFW is the youth club, so if it had been my pick, I would have picked VFW over Red Run, but it seems our advisory board has come to the opposite conclusion and I will respect their decision and be voting yes on this tonight, and I can't wait to see it in there.
Anybody else? Good work, I think it was a good outcome, I think it shows the process works. Not everything is a matter of opinion, there's research, there's diligence, there's professional staff that help usher in cool projects into our community. And I think this neighborhood will really benefit from it, it's a big park there, it's one of our, I think, great open spaces and more the mid-north part of town. And there's a lot of children that live in that area that will take full advantage of this park, so, or this park structure. So, I think it's cool, I think it'll be fun, and I look forward to seeing them during soccer practice, when we're walking around pacing, when we're not watching our kids, watching other people's kids play and enjoy life. That'll be a good thing. Commissioner Collo?
You know, just to Commissioner Macy's point, I think we should ask the Parks and Recreation Committee to look at doing VFW Park next, because that is next to the youth club, would be a great park. As we're upgrading parks, I mean, this is, this is coming out of black grant money, right? Like, this is the city investing more into parks over and over, you know, we passed the millage, we're supplementing the parks with general fund money. So, I think, you know, the next time we should really look at VFW Park for the next big upgrade like this, too.
Alright, well, we have a motion on the table that is the motion that's been presented with the modification that we have backs on the benches and a slight managerial discretion about the placement of a couple of those benches that we will extend to staff. It's not actually part of the motion, but we can always extend to staff for slight, small, minor, non-impact, shouldn't say that. It'll be impactful, but it's clearly up to discretion of staff where they want to put those, so that should be fine. Okay, with that, any other discussion? I'll call for the vote, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes. Alright, good work, team, great questions, by the way. I didn't even pick up on that, Commissioner Cheesem and Commissioner Douglas, that the backs weren't on the, on the benches. But, you know, I can absolutely see the argument for them, so thank you for, for that insightfulness.
And let me just add, ooh, who did I sound like just then? Let me just add that it's not just backs on benches, it's the height of benches and the seat depth of seating. You've heard me talk about this in vis-à-vis the possible plaza improvements on Fifth Street. I mean, there are standards for this sort of thing that make it comfortable for people to sit, and I just encourage anybody who's making decisions about that to keep that in mind as they make those decisions.
Alright, July 2025 Traffic Committee Resolutions. Our City Engineer extraordinaire, Ms. Holly Donahue.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight I have recommendations from our July 22nd Traffic Committee meeting, just two resolutions for tonight. The first item that you'll see up on the screen here is a request for speed humps. This is on Linwood between Woodward and 12 Mile Road due to speeding concerns, and this is a road that runs behind the Shrine Grade School. Traffic measurements showed that we had an 85th percentile speed of 28 miles per hour and about 550 vehicles per day. Based on our specific criteria for installing speed humps, Linwood does qualify to have them installed, and that includes having 67% of the residents in favor. Several residents attended the traffic meeting, they were in support of these speed humps and no one spoke in opposition to them, as well Shrine Grade School also signed in favor of the petition. So, the committee is recommending that we approve the installation of the two speed humps shown here on the screen with the necessary signage and striping for Linwood Avenue. We would include those in a 2026 road project with the estimated cost of $19,000. And then, our second item here was a request to look at the existing unsignaled crosswalks on North Main Street. So, this is north of 11 Mile Road, at the intersections of University and at Pingree. A big concern here was, you know, safety for pedestrians, especially related to speeding cars on Main Street and the visibility of the pedestrians as they try to cross the road there. So, we have three crosswalks between 11 Mile and Varnum. One is on the south side of Pingree Boulevard, kind of a little bit further to the north, that one does have a pedestrian refuge island. And then we have two of them at University. The one on the north side is just paint on the road, no, no crossing improvements there, so that's a lot of lanes to walk across. The one on the south side does have a pedestrian island there, so that's a little bit more comfortable. We have seen some accidents at these locations, nothing, you know, no fatalities, no pedestrian-related accidents or injuries. We did see a pattern of rear-end crashes, though, so we think cars are stopping for people in the crosswalk, but the car behind them probably doesn't realize that and is, you know, causing some accidents because of that. So, to qualify for enhanced crossing improvements, MDOT recommends that we have at least 1,500 vehicles per day on the road. We have, like, 10 times that amount on this street. And you also want to see about 20 pedestrians in any one hour using that crosswalk. So, we did take counts here, we found that the south crossing at East University has 33 pedestrians per hour. That was the most popular location, that absolutely qualifies for an enhancement. In contrast, the north leg at University, where we don't have a pedestrian island, that only has 13 pedestrians an hour. Pingree as well was at 13 pedestrians an hour. So, to enhance safety, staff is recommending that we look at installing the rectangular rapid flashing beacons. There's a little picture of them here, where pedestrians push the button and they start flashing both sides of the road, both sides of the sign. So, to install those, it's just so that, you know, pedestrians feel a little safer going into the crosswalk and drivers can see that something is happening, especially at nighttime. The university south leg crosswalk, as I mentioned, that has a lot of pedestrians, that absolutely qualifies for RFBs. The Pingree crosswalk, while it doesn't qualify, it only has the 13 pedestrians. Staff and the committee as well felt like it would be kind of confusing if we put the flashing signs at University, but we didn't have them at Pingree with a very similar type of crossing. So, we're recommending that they be installed at both locations with a pedestrian refuge island. We're also recommending that we get rid of this northern crosswalk at University, get rid of the paint, get rid of the ramps that lead you into the road there and put full height curb. Just because there's a lot of distance to cross there, it's not a very comfortable crossing and we have a much safer location just on the other side of that intersection. And then the final change that's being recommended with this item is to stripe and eliminate one parking space just south of Pingree, so that's kind of shown in this image here. Just put some, some paint striping, we did something very similar at University because it's very hard if you're turning from Pingree to see cars coming, if there's a car parked right here in this parking stall. And it's also can be hard to see pedestrians if you're driving northbound on Main Street. So, we thought that would help make pedestrians more visible, also hopefully prevent some accidents at that location. Estimated cost for these improvements is $34,000 and we can cover that with a budget that we set aside for miscellaneous traffic safety improvements. The RFB signs would hopefully be installed this fall by DPS, and then that crosswalk removal, all the concrete work associated with that would be next year in 2026. And that's all I have tonight.
Questions? Commissioner Macy?
First of all, amazing as always, laid it out, made us understand, I'm basically a traffic engineer now. But I just, I'm thinking about this, I think this sounds like a great solution. It seems like you, you and the committee have come up with some really great ideas to make this safer for all around. I thought in the past you have not liked these flashy sign things, am I wrong to think that you are not a big fan of these? And if so, like, is this a specific spot that they would be good, or you just, like, we have to do something here?
Right, so people can change, and, you know, I've grown over the years. No, so the place where we had it before that I was really concerned about was we had it on 11 Mile Road at the Imagine, and this was before there was a traffic signal or anything there, and I was like, you want people to cross five lanes on a 35 mile an hour road with, with nothing else there to help them out? It made me really nervous and I was worried we were going to have accidents or even fatalities. In this case, I think we've, we're putting them in a location where you have to cross two lanes, you have somewhere to stop in the middle of the road and then continue on your way. Another reason I get, I'm a little touchy about these is I don't want to see these every single block. Like, I don't think we want these in the downtown at every, every street. Case like here, though, this is when people get out of the downtown and they are ready to speed. And boy, when you compare northbound traffic to southbound, northbound speeds like crazy and southbound is like right around 26, 27 miles an hour, which kind of surprised me. But as people do that, they're like, let's get out of here, let's go. I think that's a really good way to help people calm down, slow down, if they see those flashing.
So, I have a question that maybe you just answered, but I agree, we don't want to see these at every intersection. They kind of, you know, they don't, they're meaningless if you have too many of them because they just get, you know, blind to, to the eyes. But we did have a request in the south main at Sixth and Main about having a similar sign down there. There isn't any current sign like we have in the middle of downtown. People are coming out of the highway, you know, getting onto Main Street, it's wide, they're, you know, before they hit the, you know, congestion of Main Street, you know, they, they probably still go a little fast there. Is that something we're also considering on the south part of Main Street as well?
We haven't studied that specifically for an RFB. I know in the past, a big concern is it's close to the railroad. If you have any kind of sign that blocks any part of their arm or signal head, they're, they're in your face and they do not want that, they won't allow it. I'd have to actually look very closely and see, are we within their right-of-way and what would we be blocking if we did that? And I'm also a little nervous, like, if I put one there, then they're going to probably want one at Fifth Street as well and they're going to want one at Seventh Street, everywhere else we have signals, right? But those are like the three in a row. So, again, I'd be worried about the-
It's kind of like there at Sixth, that's like the first main intersection when you're, maybe Fifth, but at Sixth, that's where you probably get most folks crossing and it's a, it's a, welcome to Royal Oak, there's pedestrians here, a sign, too, you know what I mean? Like, there's an advantage to that. I was just curious, I mean, that's not what's on the topic tonight, but I would like, you know, if someone does bring that to the Citizens Traffic Committee, that, that would be of interest, given the fact we're doing it on the north, we might have a similar problem on the south. Oh, wow, Commissioner Herzog and then Commissioner Collo.
Well, just to build off of that, if we redo Fifth Street and that becomes a place where people come to enjoy, that might be an interesting intersection to look at.
Yep.
So, just seconding what you're saying.
Okay. Alright, well, we have two, oh, Commissioner Collo, I'm so sorry. I've been pretty quiet tonight, just sometimes I forget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Donahue, looking back at a couple of years ago when we did something similar, we took a spot away on University, we striped it off. I'm actually looking at the Google map picture right now and those stripes is a large FedEx truck that was using it as parking. We had a conversation back then, I just want to know maybe your thoughts on potentially putting some bike parking in these spots, in these striped-off spots. I know downtown is at a, you know, you walk downtown and you see people park, changing their bikes to street signs, to trees. So, for vacating these spots for cars, maybe using them as bikes, especially with all the new residents that have been added to, you know, that area, the new business, could be a good use of the space and I'd get your thoughts on that.
Sure, yeah, I haven't really thought of that. You normally see that the bikes are right up on the sidewalk or there's some infrastructure there, but that's actually a great way to kind of prevent trucks' deliveries from, from encroaching into that area. So, can I say we will look at it and if it's doable, we'll do it?
Sounds good to me.
And if it makes sense not to, we won't.
Okay. So, that'd be both on University and then Pingree, the one we're about to vacate?
We'll look at it, yeah.
Thanks.
Great idea, Commissioner Collo.
They almost did it here.
I know, I'm glad that you raised your hand twice. Alright, anybody else, questions? Anybody want to make motions on these traffic committee recommendations? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll move a, do we, should we do these separately or can I do them together?
I think you could probably do them together.
Okay, I'll move approval of both items 10A and 10B.
Alright, is there a second to Commissioner Douglas's motion? Commissioner Cheesem with the fast draw gets the second. Alright, discussion on this, motion. Commissioner Macy?
I, I think our clerk might, might want to do them one at a time.
Can we do the two stuff here? That's how it is on the agenda and that's how it's formatted in ESGR.
Aha. Fine, I asked.
Legally, we can do them together, but maybe, so do we just amend? Procedurely, it's better, so can we amend the motion to only do one of them? Or do you want to just recall the motion? What's the best way to go about this now that there's a motion on the table for both?
Has that been seconded already?
I move we amend the motion to approve item 10A.
Okay.
It was the second you agreed with that?
Yeah, we have a second by Commissioner Cheesem? Yep. Ms. Hallis, does that work? Okay, so now we've amended to do them both, to do A. Everyone understand the motion in front of us, any discussion? Alright, I'll call the vote, oh, Commissioner Cheesem?
So, the first one is, sorry, the first one is the speed bumps, right?
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to comment on that, so I think, I think when we look at these ways to modify traffic, to modify the infrastructure to slow down traffic, I think it's really great to look at what's near, near that area. to look at what's near, near that area. And the fact that there's a school right there, I think it's a really important consideration, which makes me think of the safe routes to school and that you're able to have them taken on.
In collaboration with Jill Martin and with the Royal Oak Schools. And I know that we have had some contact with Shrine. And so I wonder if that, you know, that's been in their minds. But we're, we're working and looking at lots of different streets and sidewalks and crossings near schools and looking at whether we should make changes like this or other types of changes to slow down traffic, to make things safer for kids to get back and forth to school if they want to walk or bike. I also think that that initiative is not just for students, but it's for all members of our, of our community. And so I also, I'm jumping to the next, next one, but you know, there, we, when we think about the Pingree Street crossing, there's also Barton Towers is near there, the paint, there's those Barton North Park, is that one of the parks, one of the Barton Parks is right there. And so I think there's also likely to be folks who might be a little bit slower or might have some mobility challenges, or parents with kids crossing there. So I think it's really good for us to consider that, which I know we all do up here. But I just wanted to highlight that we're always thoughtful of those different aspects of these decisions.
And I would argue at Pingree, you get a lot of kids that use those intersections to get to the middle school, that walk to the middle school.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anybody else? All right, I'll call for the vote. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, B.
So that was to modify the motion?
Oh, that's right. We modified it. Good job. Okay, now, now we're gonna vote on the modified motion. All right. Any discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Great. Good catch. Okay, now, this government thing is complicated.
It really is.
All right. So now we have one left, which is B. Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval of 10B.
All right, motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion on this motion? Okay, no signs of any discussion. Did you guys get that one? B, no signs of any discussion? All right, thank you. I want to make sure you're not awake at the wheel, all right? Got to get a few dad jokes in. All right, I'll call for the vote. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. So, good work tonight, team. That brings us to the end of tonight's meeting. Notwithstanding anything for the further benefit, benefit of the people we serve, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Herzog?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Herzog. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any lengthy or provocative debate on this motion?
I, yes. I, I would just like to say that, that even with Ben at the table, we managed to get this done in under an hour and a half.
Hey, we're fast. What can we say? All right. All right, I'll call for the vote. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourned.
I need to practice how Robert's Rules works and how you should talk.